Young people with a sense of life.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
And now we're going to have this Juanita Harper, our executive director of the Human Relations Council Board, come forward with the mayor and the board trustees to present citations to people who did the computer classes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
For the past two years, the Village of Hempstead, along with the Youth Advisory Council, this is Donna Raphael, the teenagers have been teaching the seniors' computers. And I must say that it is a wonderful sight to see them interact with each other. The seniors get a kick out of it. And as I had to share on my Facebook page, the very last day, we had to set seniors up. They wanted us to set them up with Snapchat, Facebook Messenger. So to all of those in this audience here, I must say, don't let social media intimidate you. If you get a look like this, you'll be on Facebook, Snapchat, Twitter, in no time. So I'm just going to read the first certificate, and the mayor and the trustees are going to come down and present them to the students. This first one is to Stephanie Shabazz. I, Mayor Don Ryan, and the Board of Trustees, extend our sincere congratulations to you for the extensive service, dedication, and commitment you have given to our senior citizens. You are an inspiring student with a genuine heart. Thank you for helping those who once cared for us. It is the highest honor. As such, on behalf of our residents, I am proud to present you with this award, wishing you continued success in all of your future endeavors. Stephanie Shabazz. Diana Shabazz. Marielle Morales. Frank Puller. Dariella DiCon. Andrew Cobra. Carlos Suarez. Byron Reyes Muller. And Iris Sally Manivar. And I feel that students who may couldn't be here today.
Before we take the vix, the board would like to thank you. This intergenerational type of program is very exciting, very worthwhile, it means a lot, says a lot about you, and we applaud that. And we applaud the intergenerational experience with the seniors seeing you from. So Juanita and Donna, thank you. And people, thank you very much, and wish you any success in the future. Now, a little photo shoot for a moment, if you doesn't mind. Perhaps if the other people would stand behind us, it would be easier to get anybody a little photo. Between the chairs, move as far as you can. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Does the board wish to make the motion at the executive session?
Move. And the purpose of the executive session is regarding pending litigations. There's a flaw on that, so we'll be done for a few minutes.
Okay. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We're done.
Come out of the executive session, please.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Does the board of trustees wish to take any action at this time if litigation matters in the settlement in the document executive session? Does the board trustees wish to approve the proposed settlement as discussed in the executive session?
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
This is an opportunity for anybody to bring forward the questions they may have on a doctored item. So you have an opportunity to talk about the doctored item at one point, try to walk over. Obviously, at the end, we will allow the open mic for any questions you may have at that time. But this is anything that's a doctored item. There is a five-minute limit.
Yes, my name is Confuse Rhines.
Do you have a question? Can you have me here?
My question is that the public hearing that on this 6:15 that was not held, I feel strongly that I brought it up to the mayor's attention, it was posted at the public library. And it wasn't posted appropriately. Now, I question up about this hearing, the public hearing here, for this being Section 8623 and Section 95.83, 8.3. Now, I brought it up, and no one contacted me about it. This, I'm very disappointed because I brought this up to you, Mr. Mayor, and no one called me to say, "Miss Rhines, you were right, we posted it inappropriately, it wasn't done correctly." And now, here it is, sitting on this docket here, June 20th, and no one called me to say, "Miss Rhines, you want to put input in regards to this." I never got notice of this, and I think that this due diligence wasn't done. How many people from the community attended this hearing? I want to know how many people attended this meeting? And how was the information given out? And the fact that I brought it to the mayor's attention, that it was posted, and I ran around that day looking for the meeting and couldn't find it? I think that things are not, and it's not your fault, Mr. Mayor, but there's no transparency on that voice we had. And I'm going to say it openly, I think that we need to start looking into, if they don't do things right, even if their term is not up, to remove these people from their position if they're not doing things properly. Because public hearing is for people in the community to give their input when they're trying to do things. And if they're not doing it properly, and they're not posting it properly, then we, as a community, and you all that are representing us, need to make sure that it's done properly, and it's been done forthrightly, and it's been done under the law. How many people attended this meeting, this hearing? Can somebody give me that answer?
And, Miss Rhines, the meeting just took place today at 6:15, the meeting that you're referring to, if I'm not mistaken. The meeting, it was approximately maybe four to five people here. The meeting did open up at 6:15. The meetings are posted on the Village of Hempstead website, and they was posted on the website on Friday that just passed, and it's also inside of the beacon. We have to post it within the beacon 10 days prior to the meeting. So we did post it within the beacon.
Is the beacon mailed to every village?
No, it's not, but the beacon's here at the Village of Hempstead. But it's inside of this local Hempstead paper, the beacon, so we did post it in the paper.
Okay, and my point is that I brought to mayor's attention that it was posted at the, it was hanging in the library, and I was running around looking for this meeting that they claim was a public hearing, and it was nowhere to be found.
Well, what we do is, Mrs. Rhines, we posted in 13 consecutive locations, and we also notarize it so the library is one of our said locations where we post these meetings at, that the meeting is going to take place here at Village Hall, the time, the location, and the date.
Well, it didn't say that. I have a picture of it.
We have it posted inside of our.
Well, I'm going to tell you, I have a picture of it, and it, well, I want to speak about saying. It did not say that. It just said when the next, it said the meeting, I was running around the village looking for it. It didn't say where the meeting was going to be. Mr. Mayor, do you have a copy of the text message?
No, I know you've all, I verified that. I told you, I don't know if any meeting was going to be held that night, that our meeting was going to be this night. And I didn't think it's possible to find some to me, I think it's an error.
And Ms. Paret's posted.
I haven't seen your copy, though, I'd love to see that.
I have it. And Ms. Paret's posted it, it has her name on it. So you didn't post it, Samantha. But my concern is that I wanted to be at that meeting, and I don't think that we're doing our due diligence, because when we were running, anybody was running for, running for a position, I got plenty of phone calls. So we, the same system that we use to tell me you're running for election, is the same system we need to use to get information out to people in the community. And I'm sorry, we should be doing that, because I wanted to be at the hearing to get, to find out what it's about, and to get information to me about this. Because this is a major change in our section code. To me, it's something I'm concerned about. So I missed the public hearing, and four or five people, and over, how many people live in the Village of Hempstead? Seriously, how many people live, I don't know, so somebody please tell me. You all ran for election. Somebody tell me how many people live in the Village of Hempstead?
Fifty-one, sixty, seventy thousand.
So four or five people that came out? That's not acceptable, because that means information to get out. Because I wanted to be here.
Well, there was a meeting, Miss Rhines, over inside the library of Armored Gardens, so I don't know if that was a mistaken meeting that you're referring to, but any meetings pertaining to the Village of Hempstead before the Board of Trustees is posted within beacon, and it's a legal notice.
If you can send us that, I'd appreciate it.
I have it, I'll send it again, and I'll send it to Ed, Doc, Ed, Ms. Renfro, and Mr. Pettis, and Trustee O'Mahon, and Trustee Rodriguez, I don't have their phone number, but I will forward the picture that I sent, oh, Mayor. I think it's not, it's wrong, and we need another public hearing for this.
I was unable to read that picture, but I appreciate if you do it again.
We need another public hearing for this, I'm sorry, I don't think we should go any further until it's a real public hearing for this section, for these two changes. A real public hearing.
And anybody else wish to comment on the doctored item? All right, well, let's move forward.
Clerk asks the Board of Trustees, do they wish to have the minutes of the regular meeting of June 6, 2016, be read aloud?
I note that the meeting of the minutes of the regular meeting, I note that the meeting of the minutes of the regular meeting on June 6, 2017, be dispensed and that they be accepted as review.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Report of the Village Justice.
One more time.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
And Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Report of the Village Justice for the month of May 2017, total number of cases before the court, 2,390. Total money's remitted to the Village Controller, $221,946. Copy of this report is on file at the Village Court's office during regular business hours. Clerk wishes to record that Mayor Ryan has approved all of the miscellaneous license and permit applications as reviewed, as there is written in the docket. Does the board wish to approve the resolution granting the taxpayer, Desolated Realty Corporation, MND Realty Holding LLC, or the property known 198 Grand Avenue, Hempstead, New York, a refund in the amount of $25,000 for the tax years 2005, 2006, through 2013, 2014?
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Does the Board of Trustees wish to approve the resolution granting the taxpayer, JTB Properties LLC, for the property known as 61 through 73 Hillbrook Street, Hempstead, New York, a refund in the amount of $90,000 and two equal installments of $45,000 for the tax years 2005, 2006, through 2012, 2013?
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
I should, yes, Dave, for a moment, please. Those of you that have questions you would like to ask during the open mic session, if you could fill out the form, we'll bring it forward now, it'd be appreciated.
Clerk offers the following resolution for adoption, that pursuant to the recommendation of Larry Lutz, purchasing agent, and Mike Taylor, superintendent of water plant, at the bid number 4HENV 2017-2018, Laurel Avenue Water Plant Site Drainage Improvement Contract 1, the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, which bid open June 6, 2017, be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, PSL Industries Incorporated, 646th Street, Mon Combe, New York, 11779, in the amount of $59,900.
So move.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk offers the following resolution for adoption, that authorization is hereby granted for the Incorporated Village of Hempstead to enter an agreement with Miller &amp; Man, Incorporated, 1 Pennsylvania Plaza, 38th Floor, New York, New York, 10119, to provide actuarial consulting services to the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, or be not to exceed $14,000 for the fiscal year ending May 31, 2018.
So move.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk offers the following resolution for adoption, that authorization is hereby granted for the Incorporated Village of Hempstead to enter an agreement with Miller &amp; Man, 1 Pennsylvania Avenue, 38th Floor, New York, New York, 10119, to provide actuarial variation and related liability for providing post-retirement benefits, other than pensions, GASC 45, to the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, or be not to exceed $15,500 for the fiscal year ending May 31, 2018.
Move.
Comment, Mayor? That both of those resolutions should be declared in 17, not 18.
Seventeen?
Yes, for the fiscal year.
Then the resolution stands as that correction, please, the date should be May 31, 2017. Thank you. Give me a second.
Trustee Renfro, do you second?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Last thing, say.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk offers the following resolution for adoption, that pursuant to Section 50-28, Paragraph A-2, of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, permission is hereby granted for Antioch Baptist Church, 94 James L.L. Varell Avenue, Hempstead, New York, to erect a tent on church grounds to hold a crusade on Wednesday, July 5. July 5, Thursday, July 6, and Friday, July 7, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Saturday, July 8, and Sunday, July 9, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And the building department is hereby authorized to issue the records and permit.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk offers the following resolution for adoption, that authorization is hereby granted for the regular scheduled meetings of the Board of Trustees, Tuesday, July 4, 2017, at 6:30 p.m. We reschedule to Wednesday, July 5, 2017, at 6:30 p.m., in view of the July 4 holiday.
So move.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Does the Board wish to approve at this time the public hearing, which is held on June 6, to consider amending the Code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, Chapter 86, Licensing and Business Regulations? I need a second?
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
There was a public hearing on June 6.
If I may, Mrs. Rhines, there was a public hearing on June 6?
How many people attended?
I'm not aware, if that comes up for me.
We have to move forward at this time.
Does the Board of Trustees wish to approve at this time the public hearing, which is held on June 6, to consider amending the Code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, Chapter 103, Public Assemblies?
Give me a second.
I need a second?
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolution scheduling to adopt fees related to cabaret licenses, whereas the Village of Trustees desires to adopt fees related to cabaret licenses, the following non-refundable license fees will apply in addition to any other fees that are required by the Village of Hempstead Village Code. Occupants save $1,000 through $100, $400, one-on-one, to $300, $1,000, $301, to $600, $1,500, over $600, $2,610.
So move.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolution scheduling, public hearing, to consider adopting Code Section 25, Library Board, into the Code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, whereas the Board of, the Village Board of Trustees desired to amend the Code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead in order to reflect the existence of the Library Board. And whereas pursuant to 617.5(c)(20) and (27) a SEGRA, regulations amended according to the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, are routine on continuing agency administration and management, not including group programs or major reordering of priorities and promulgation of the regulations, policies, procedures, and legislative decisions in connection with any Type 2 action, and therefore this proposed action, a Type 2 action, requires no further action pursuant to SEGRA. Now, therefore, the Village Board of Trustees hereby schedules a public hearing to be held on the 5th day of July, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. at the Hempstead Village Hall, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York, to consider adopting Chapter 25, Library Board.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolution scheduling, public hearings, consider amending Chapter 60 of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, entitled Electrical Standards, whereas the Code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, Chapter 60, entitled Electrical Standards, require amendment. Whereas pursuant to 617.5(c)(20) and (27) a SEGRA, regulations amended according to the Code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, are routine on continuing agency administration and management, not including group programs or major reordering of priorities and promulgation of the regulations, policies, procedures, and legislative decisions in connection with any Type 2 action. And therefore, this proposed action, a Type 2 action, requires no further action pursuant to SEGRA. Now, therefore, the Village of Trustees, now, therefore, the Village Board of Trustees hereby schedules a public hearing to be held on the 5th day of July, 2017, at 6:15 p.m. at the Hempstead Village Hall, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York, 11550, to consider amending Chapter 60 of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, Chapter 60, entitled Electrical Standards.
So move.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk offers the following resolution for adoption, authorizing the appointment of and/or salary changes for certain full-time and part-time employees of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, as follows. Thomas Costadine, 99 Nichols Court, Department Buildings, title Electrical Inspector, grade 19-0, new, salary $68,336, upon civil service approval.
So move.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Designation Christian Castello as Chairman of the Electrical Board, for the period commencing June 20, 2017. The appointment of Thomas J. Costadine is as a member of the Electrical License Board, expiring on April 5, 2021.
So move.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk offers the following resolution for adoption, authorizing the appointment of and/or salary changes for certain full-time and part-time employees of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, as reviewed as follows, be certified. Christopher Sardewy, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York, Department Parks and Recreation, title Laborer, grade 104-2, new, salary $52,016, upon civil service approval.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
This is addendum 1. Clerk offers the following resolution for adoption, authorizing the appointment of seasonal employees of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, as reviewed. Brandon Dash, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. Shane Hatcher, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. Diana Howard, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. Julie Swat, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. Sean Easton, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. Sarita Johnson, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. Aria McDonald, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. Shontae Uden, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. Justian Newville, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. Noah Dancy, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. Michael James, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. Zaire Rancy, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. Andre Ross, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. Rodney Highsmith, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. Devin Roshan, 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York.
Finish?
Yes, sir.
So move. Second. I'll just have to, you gotta just hurry. Is there another one?
I need a, yes, sir.
Yeah, we have another.
Right. Okay. On Rodney Highsmith, we're gonna pull Rodney Highsmith off. I need a motion?
So move.
I need a second?
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
And just to let you know, Rodney was pulled because he received an internship. So it's a good thing. From Stanford University. Second addenda. Carrier L. Blue and Gladys G. Rivera as members of the Community Development Agency Board for the period commencing June twenty, two thousand and seventeen, expiring June twenty, two thousand and eighteen. The appointment of Mark R. Huber as a member of the Community Development Board office expires June twenty, two thousand and eighteen. I need a motion?
Move.
Are we here?
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Explain what just happened?
So the board has certain dates where they expire. Carrier Blue, Laz Rivera have been posted for one more year. It was an opening, and it was still by that. That completes the CBA board.
Clerk offers the following resolution for adoption that all meeting bills including self-insurance files ordered by the board of trustees on check warrant date of June twenty, two thousand and eighteen, approved as previously viewed.
Move.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
I will now go into the mic section. Here's the, eleven please, five minutes for your remarks. And Reginald Lucas, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My first thing that I'm looking at after telling you this here is that if you want to enter into a big, with the Incorporated, provide actual consulting services, I'd like to know consulting and what. Then I'd like to know how ShotSpotter is doing. Also, how many shootings have there been since the last meeting that we had? Two recently. And what was the outcome? Is the investigation still going on with the shooting on High Block on North Hill Road? And the one on Front Street, where the young man got shot in the head? Also, being that ShotSpotter was failing a couple of times and a meeting was put together, I'd like to be there when you guys meet with the owners of ShotSpotter or whatever, so they can tell you about why ShotSpotter failed. Because when I first heard their speech, ShotSpotter was supposed to be not able to fail, you know what I'm saying? And it seemed to be failing more and more. They get more and more excuses about maybe the indoors or outdoors, or in a car or out of car. I'd like to know exactly what we paying for and what kind of costs are we getting from the people that are paying. What's happening with downtown Hempstead? I haven't heard anything else, I want to know what's going on. Are we still with them or are we not? Or is some new one happening? Code enforcement. You know, every time I turn around, somebody always telling me how dirty downtown is and, you know, it looks pretty. That is code enforcement's thing, and I want to know, are they enforcing, keep the downtown clean? And how many code enforcers do we have working, you know, daily? How often do you guys meet with the department heads? And what type of, we say program are they putting out saying that they're gonna do in the next six months or something like that? I guess it's.
Perhaps, Deputy Chief, you want to handle the shootings in the local?
There's been one shooting since the last board meeting. It's a minor injury, it's uncooperative. The shooting on your block's been still being investigated, and the one on Front Street also is. As far as ShotSpotter goes, the technology is never perfect. But it's living up to what it should be doing. To give you the stats, and I'll pass this around when I'm done. It was initiated in two thousand and thirteen, and two thousand and thirteen, through ShotSpotter, we had five hundred and twelve confirmed shots fired. I won't go through every year, but last year, it was two hundred and seventy-nine. It's almost a fifty percent drop in the amount of shootings that we had. So it's never gonna be perfect, but as a deterrent, it's absolutely working.
You know, I hear it's insane, and I know it sounds beautiful, but I'm getting complaints from people that are around Grand Street, sitting here in shots. Correct.
You know, like now.
If, when you guys come out and the ShotSpotter goes off and you don't find anything, then it's like, it didn't happen, is that correct?
Correct. Unless we find a shell casing, or unfortunately there's a round in somebody's car or their house. Technology, once again, I'll explain to you briefly, if there's too much wind, if only one sensor picks it up. It's very hard to distinguish between a gunshot and a firecracker or something making a loud bang. But when two or three sensors picks it up, it's pretty obvious using to the audio that it's a gunshot. So, once again, technology is never gonna be perfect, just like your computer, just like our cell phones. It's never gonna be a hundred percent, that's just the way it is.
Well, I understand it may not be a hundred percent. Matter of fact, how many do we have? You know, I know it's five, so do we have three? Do we have more than three?
About seventy?
Seventy?
Yeah. They're all around the world.
They're different from three.
Yeah, they're different from three, seventy.
The three that you're talking about, that you probably heard is, Assistant Chief said that they needed these three sensors to really get the output down and to pinpoint what the location is from a single shot or multiple shots. So that's where the number three that you're probably hearing is.
All right, so they have the, we had some cameras to the ShotSpotter, so when they don't go off, that the camera don't go off any load? What's going on?
Well, they, they react to the sound. So they should go right. So, it, the, see, what happens is when, when a, when a sound is heard and is picked up by three, then there'll be somebody on the other end who's listening to those to determine whether it was a shot or whether it was a backfire or something slamming into something, you know, and minus the environmental instructions. However, the cameras will still rotate, or should rotate to the sound of where it came.
So, sounds good. The one that, the last shooting that we had, we went through, so William's car, top of his face or something like that?
No, it struck him in the back.
Who?
It struck him in the back.
In the what?
On the butt.
In the butt.
That long?
As were struck him. Fortunately, it was gradual, it was not severe.
It wasn't even, because the arm went through the car. Fortunately, it slowed the slug down enough that when it hit our hand length, it fell on the, on the seat next to us. So it never penetrated, it was just a concussion to our leg. It was more like a bar.
Yeah, there's no question that could have been a very serious situation because there were four youngsters in the car. And we just have to pray that that happened the way it did. It's the same, it did occur the way it did. But we have the ongoing investigation. I believe there's been at least one of us, but there was not.
Okay, but I understand you have some sort of gang thing going on in there, right?
Don't know if it's, it's necessarily related to the gang or not, it's still an investigation, so I really guess.
Okay. All right.
All right, you had a question about code enforcement?
Ah, yeah, absolutely, about code enforcement.
Joe, would you be kind enough to?
Sure. All right, how you doing, Joe?
How are you?
Pretty good, yeah.
He was outside when he asked the question.
Well, I want to know, I'm getting a lot of complaints from my other citizens and members saying that downtown is a, not clean, you know, they, 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 people are just beating the big ol' front end stores and whatever. How many code enforcers do we have?
Two. Two for the downtown area?
For the downtown, yeah.
Yes, there's five code enforcement inspectors in the village. And two are assigned to downtown.
Okay, have those two turned in a lineup stuff in the last two weeks?
Yes, Steve Sorio, when he follows court counter, they like to write. And they do, they do their job well. If there's a concern about a certain address, they can give it to me and I'll address it.
Is there, do we need more?
No, I think we're.
Two for the?
That's two for the downtown.
Five for the entire village.
Oh, five for the entire village, correct. Do you guys agree with that? Hello?
Yeah, the question was asked, and the answer from Joe Smol. We agree with Joe Smol. He's the head of that department, and he knows whether or not he has to.
We're in agreement that two for downtown and the three is for rest of the others.
That's correct.
Is that night in daytime?
During the day.
During the day. Okay.
If there's any issue at night, we'll address it.
All right, you guys, do we meet with the departments?
Yes, sir, department has meetings monthly, and of course, they also meet with us at the first Tuesday of every month. So the answer would be yes, sure, yes, sir.
Okay, sure, it's a yes. When you're getting out of the meeting, I mean, they're, they're saying that in the next three months they're gonna do this, or whatever.
There's an evaluation going on as to the weaknesses and strengths of each department. They've been addressed independently.
Do the department say they understand?
Okay.
But the department has said it understands?
Each one has a different answer. When there is a need and we see it, we can fill it, like we did tonight with the two assignments, we do something. But we obviously can't hire everyone that they would like, we have to stay within our budget constraints.
Okay, and our last thing is, we got somebody doing some consulting for us, consulting for what?
Yeah, loaning services.
Those are actuarial services, Reggie? Basically what they do, there's, there's two actuarial services that, two actuarial reports that get issued, one on auto, general, and comp injuries that are out there. And the actuarial study is to project what the potential liability is to the village, you know, if, at that particular point in time.
So it's more or less an insurance consultant?
No, it's not insurance at all. It's, it's an actuarial study for financial statement purposes. So we have to record a liability at the end of the year in our financials, and that's done through an actuarial study. So they project out, you know, we have however many cases open on the books, they will project out which ones they think are gonna close and how much the, the risk is to the village, you know, for every case that's out there. And they come up with a number, and that number gets recorded as a liability at year end.
And how often is this done?
That particular study is done once a year. The second one is GASBIE forty-five, which is Government Accounting Standards Board, forty-five pronouncement, which is on the cost of post-employment benefits. Okay, so it takes a look at everyone who has ever worked here and everyone who is here, projects out how long they will be here and what the total cost of their benefit package will be. If, if we were to close the door tomorrow, what's that number? Okay, that's another, that's another study that's required by Government Accounting Standards.
That's okay, thank you.
Mr. Lucas, would you put your question answered about the downtown development?
Oh, no, 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 that was not the question.
Alan, put me hand, I want. There is a change in downtown to this effect. Scott Breckler, the R X R, and Don Marti of Renaissance Downtown are fifty percent each owners of the movement to the both Main Street projects, so-called Main Street project. Presently, Don Marti is on the sideline. Scott Breckler has taken over the role of being the co-master developer, and we have met with him. He asked us what we envisioned, and we asked him what he can do to see if he can solve some of the things that we want to do. Basically, we're concerned about putting the cart before the horse. Our sewer is disrepair, they built it nineteen twenty-two on Main Street. Even without the development, we need another water tower. So we were hoping we will fix some of these solutions before moving forward. Don Marti's plan basically was fourteen parking lots, fourteen apartment buildings, fourteen pilots, and it would be some ten thousand people by the end of the decade. Scott Breckler is a little bit more imaginative. He's well-financed, and he's gonna come up with a plan that he has not yet presented. But this meeting was two weeks ago, so we understand that. But Scott Breckler has the reputation, will be courted, quite often coming into an area and being out for a few years. Has been dragged for a long time. If Scott is unhappy, then he hopefully will pick up the pace and maybe get some family entertainment, some commercial light industry, not just jobs, but jobs slash careers. And this is now in his lap, and he's gonna come back and present it to us, and we'll go forward from there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alan Yusen?
Good afternoon, Mayor Ryan, trustees and Hempsters.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. And I'm Senator. We have a problem with bicycles. Bicycles have been riding up to cars, some of my members have been telling me, that they're sitting in their car. Some day, started asking people for money. They did it on Spencer Place, they did it on, I think it was CIGRA. And we want police patrol to patrol these areas. Also, school buses, we had an incident this morning with school bus on Claremont and Crowell. When I was talking to one of my neighbors, they don't put their, their signs out. This kid, this grand kid was coming off the bus. Car almost was coming to pass the bus. He jumped out of the street, I jumped out of the street, we were going to stop the car. This, this can be, you know. He went ballistic with force, and I don't blame him. But we do need more police patrol, we need inspections of these buses when they come in, and we didn't get the number, but we do know the bus company. I have to listen here. Flatbed trucks are parked over there on Phoenix Street and Ingram Boulevard. You know, a big flatbed truck, these departments should be able to see during the day, night, at any time. So if they see something like this, tip it or tow it. This is not the first time we've had trucks parked on Phoenix Street. About ten years ago, we had that big oil truck that sat out there whole week. And that was unacceptable.
Phoenix and where?
Phoenix and Ingram. Also.
Excuse me a second, have you called?
No, no, I just found.
It's two, what hours is that? Early in the morning or throughout the night?
Throughout the week.
Throughout the week, all the time?
Well, it's gonna be something like that the last three weeks.
See, but what I, what I'm getting at, we have police cars coming around at some time. If you see something, you tell us to say something. If they see something, I've seen them pass trucks, I've seen them pass loud music, I've seen them pass everything. We're good. I mean, if you're patrolling, you do, good job. That's what we pay them, we paid darn good money here in the village of Hempstead for police patrol, cleaning, and everything else. Okay, street fix. I think we talked about this, and I've been talking about Ingram Boulevard even before they get the pipelines out. All right? Ingram Boulevard must be fixed. I seen the order in which they have for the. I seen, uh, the order in which, uh, they have for the, the streets to be fixed. Now, something has to be changed, because you're fixing streets where you're going to do building in. If you're gonna build something, that means you're gonna have to tear the streets back up. Then you're gonna have to put them back down. That, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense. Ingram, they put the, on, what is that, that's the west side, they put the street back down. What is that, the state or whoever? It's all, you run right sideways down the street. It's worse than it was before. Now it's sinking in, in the middle. Okay? It was bad before because the east side is bad with pipelines. Cedar Street, Cedar Street is worse than the South Bronx. Worse, or like going up into the mountains, into the woods someplace. From Williams Street to the Uniondale Line, it's, it's a hazard. Holly Street, another one. Same thing. Gladys Avenue, or Gladys Street, it's another one, and that's a short street. That's a short street, very short. And this has to be, you know, you're gonna have to look at that list and redo it, because I don't see tearing up streets. And when you do the street repair, don't patch it, and just, like, okay, we did Leverett Street, my time is out, the last one had ten minutes.
That's what you were saying, answering this question.
Okay, well, can I have another, another two minutes? Okay, uh, you did Leverett Street, you did a beautiful job on Leverett Street. You tore it all, you did the special, you did Crowell Street, you did a beautiful job on there. And Lincoln Road must be one way.
All right, I just found real quickly on that, the Traffic Safety Board makes that call. You put something in writing, you give it to Traffic Safety Board, they meet the last Monday of the month, here, six thirty. Mary Burns is the head of it. Put down what you want and why you want it, they'll investigate it with Lieutenant K., come back with recommendations, no meeting, you've been input at that time as well. Now, the reason we do it in five minutes is to curse City United, so we can move through this to my fashion. Okay, are there any things that the police need to factor in? I know you mentioned a couple of things here, I went over the list with you at your meeting, so you're aware of that, I know you weren't happy with the placement, but, uh, that would be something that Frank Terman Arrow could answer, if you want to talk to him during the weekday.
Mr. Baldwin, who are you going to do that?
The only thing I, the question I had was, you said the people on the bikes are spending in Cedar, but are these adults or kids or what?
Say teenagers to adults.
And they're going with the car soliciting for money?
Yeah, if you're sitting in the car, they'll come up to your car, solicit it.
And-
Knock it on the window, you know.
Right, well, you know, if you're murdered, they-
Oh, they, they can go about their business, so.
Right, you know, something like that, you just have to understand, you know, we drive through a block of patrol, we see kids on the bike, you know, it's hard to just sit there unless we have a complaint, that these guys are out there doing, that's something that, uh, you know, you'd have to sit there and actually receive, and then we would still need a complaint from the person, because obviously, we're not gonna hear the conversation. You know, it could be a neighbor's kid that's saying hi to you. So, you know, we don't know is what I'm saying. By looking at it, you know, you may look at it, know that that kid doesn't know that person, but us in a patrol car, we may not know that, that's why we need a citizen to make those complaints, and get descriptions on particularly what kids are doing this.
Because my neighbor informed me, that's his son-
That's fine, but, you know, they just call us and say, listen, this is a kid, he asking for money, this is what he looks like, so we're not grabbing the law, we just say no to schools about it.
What about the school buses?
What, what was your question on the school buses?
Uh, school buses, uh-
Stop signs.
The stop signs, something that, I think they had their blinkers on, but they said there's something wrong with their stop sign. And the cars was coming past, you know, it was coming through the gates.
We don't, we don't inspect their buses, but, um, I can have the lieutenant in charge of traffic look into that, and maybe contact the bus companies, and if there's any, um, summonses we can give them, we'll be there.
I can give you any company and stuff, I'll hold that. Uh, what about the flatbed truck on, um, Phoenix?
How would traffic?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Robert Jean?
Welcome to the thirty-five Manhattan Boulevard. I was gonna piggyback about the street repairs on Ingram Boulevard, just so that the, the village would know. And is there, um, a resolution or anything on paper about the removal of campaign signs after elections?
I don't know, a lot of signs are still up.
It was told on that.
How many days is, is it gonna move, it's pending on the, uh-
I don't recall, and it's about two to three months, and then you have to say, as long as you're responsible, it's for sure to remove.
Is there a penalty involved?
Yes, regular patrol truck.
Because your voice well taken, you see the signs, someone go back before the one election.
If possible, could it be shorter than a month?
We'd have to actually have a year in on that, code, well, almost last year, and we'll, we'll forward on that, but I think everyone's well taken.
Yeah.
See if we can't contact the people whose names are on it, see if we can, if we can't get them to hustle.
And I didn't put this on the paper, but there's a home health aid business on Front Street and the corner of Ingram Boulevard, and if you guys can send traffic over there, they block traffic on Front Street, and it's a hazard. They load up a whole bunch of home health aids, they lock cars, it's hard to turn, it's hard to see, they reverse, very, very dangerous.
The southwest corner?
Yes.
What time of day is that?
Early in the morning, when everybody's going to work. And it's every day. Before there, employees used to, um, park the cars in the block, but you can't, that's public parking, but as far as unloading and loading, it's very dangerous.
And we, we've actually been at that house before, but I'm sure we can take care of that one as well.
What was the address?
At the front.
I don't have the address, it's the second house from the corner on the front end of Ingram Boulevard.
If I may, I believe it's five fifth.
Right.
Just one morning in Washington, they load like forty to fifty people, and they block the corner, and it's a very dangerous corner as it is trying to make a left turn off of Ingram Boulevard.
Is that how the morning starts to continue throughout the days?
I always see them in the morning, when they're loading the truck.
Thank you.
Um, congratulations to everybody there.
Thank you. Reginald Benjamin?
Um, good evening, uh, mayor, trustees.
Good.
I'm here for my usual reasons, uh, but I would like to digress and take one minute out of my time to say something to Lamont Johnson, if I may. Um, we have been getting a lot of calls, Lamont, about what you're trying to do on the school board, and the things that they're putting you through. I'm very hopeful, and I've got a lot of calls about it, that you stand your ground to be supporting you.
Yeah.
We want you to know, um, that we stand behind you, and we realize that they're trying to do this on the street. We, we, uh, should you understand our grounds with you?
Yeah.
All you have to do is give a call, everybody's concerned about what's going on with you, please, please don't, don't break that position. Please hold your ground.
Next meeting is Thursday?
We're very concerned about, we believe that the things that are going on on that board is totally illegal, unconstitutional, and downright insane. So I just wanted you to know that. Uh, the reason why I'm here again, mayor, I realize that a whole lot of transition and things have been going on, but I'm still concerned about the same issue. We have the highest unemployment, I believe, in the entire county, I might be able to go so far to state, the entire state. So what I wanna know, what I'm asking you to do, because I realize this is a new board, would you make it a priority to look into ways, even set up a commission or something, so we can address the issue of unemployment? I have to say, personally, I have a lot of men and women who came to me looking for jobs in the hope that the Renaissance thing was going forward, but obviously, you guys won that campaign, so the people want you to do things differently. But I would say to you, that we not exclude the priorities of the, the village of Hempstead residents having first dibby on those jobs. And having said that, I'm asking you to pay more attention to the, um, this so-called anti-provability grant, I'm very happy when I heard that they hired, uh, Ricky Cook, but I believe that those money should be, uh, uh, put towards training in this community, and I would ask the entire board to pay more attention to that. I have been working with them, I will say that, um, Theresa's been, uh, trying to coordinate with us, but I would like for you guys to pay more attention to that, so that this money don't go to the bureaucrat who come up with a piece of paper with recommendations, and then all the money is gone and there are none. So, uh, I would ask that you pay attention to that. The other thing is, I had a meeting with, um, uh, with Pastor Cedric in regards to the zombie homes, as you know, I've already met with the county, the CBA, with the, uh, the land bank for the county, um, and, uh, with, uh, uh, let's say, Bino. Um, one of the things that Pastor Easy said as it relates locally here, that nobody has been dealing with the whole zombie home issue until this administrator came on, and he indicated that he is overwhelmed trying to put all these things together by himself. Would you be willing to assign somebody to help him? Because my next question is this, we can use those homes for the training programs that we have in place to train people, and I know one of your pet peeves is to give people jobs that have a future to it. And I believe that the zombie homes can help us do that and do the necessary training to help facilitate that. Um, so, so he, he, at this point, sound like he need help. And I think that you guys should pay attention to that, because we have so many zombie homes that's blighted, it's causing people to value people, homes to go down, those kinds of things. So those are the issues that I'm concerned with, and finally, I would like to ask this question, since you said Scott Rector, or whatever his name is, is taking lead.
Yes, Rector.
How do we plug into that to make sure, in this process, we don't be left out in terms of whenever they do the document, and I hope it's sooner than later, and whatever modification they come up with, the community still have first priority in terms of jobs and opportunities to work?
That's still in place.
It's still in place?
Still in place. But remember, it says that they will make a good effort.
Yeah, that's why-
And that's why-
It's a subtle, more than a subtle difference, but we, we intend to enforce that, and we're looking forward to seeing that you come up with some kind of a plan that is palatable. Consider the last couple of plans that came on the desk, what, for thirty years, tax breaks, I mean, people would graduate from college now and would have to absorb that pain until they retire. Thirty years is just too much regarding them.
Yeah, I, I relate to that, and I understand, but that's not the issue that I'm bringing up. You said that he's gonna come up with a more creative plan.
That's what we, uh-
I'm on board with that. What I'm saying now is, how do we ensure that the local community, should he come up with a plan that means development of Hempstead, that the people in Hempstead do not get left out?
The plan is still in place from one-
And who's in charge of it now? Because I don't get any information from anyone, anywhere, anyhow, and I got all of these people that are really looking at me like I'm a throw rock.
Well, it's-
I got a good shield on my-
He's the master of all, but he's taking charge.
Who?
Scott Rector. First you referenced a moment ago.
Okay.
He's the gold master of all. So this plan is gonna be presented to us, and then we'll go from there. If you don't have the plan, one of us will come.
So you're saying, soon as they have the plan, you're gonna make sure that the community is made aware of the job opportunities, somebody will be in place to make sure that they, they follow through in terms of execution, of, uh, making sure local residents have opportunities to work?
My answer, five words, yours is about fifty. Obviously, the public will be factored into the equation, there's no question about that.
Okay, alright, in terms of the zombie homes-
The zombie homes, now, uh, Dr. Easley is covering for the village board, as we're here at the guideline meeting that's going on, as he talks, otherwise, he can answer himself, but you've talked a long-
I have, that's why I'm talking to you, yes.
It's not nearly as easy a situation as you think, because first of all, the word zombie is not necessarily correct for all the man's homes.
He explains.
And we do not own the homes.
He explains.
So all the plans are doing things with the homes, we first have to find the owner, and see if we can come up with some kind of a plan to get that back from the tax rolls, where people live in the American dream, but living in there, improving daylights. It's, it's a slow process, frustrating, but Bino, we've mentioned before this, right, Bino was helping, there's some county money available in this area, we're trying to tap that, as well as any other source, but most of the people who come in here with an answer are assuming we own these homes, and we do not, so it's, it's a slower process than people at first glance believe.
Yeah, he did explain that to me, but I did go back to, let's say, to Bino, uh, I mean, she indicated that there is some creative ways to do that, but one of the things that I'm concerned about is Pastor Easley indicated that he's just overwhelmed trying to put all this stuff together by himself. And so, in order to expedite this, maybe you should consider giving him some assistance.
These are available within our framework, and he certainly will be able to handle that. I'll talk to him tomorrow, see if that's the case. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Roberto Ross?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for granting me my hearing on June first, I appreciate it. Um, now I'm asking for a decision on the hearing, I didn't know those were two separate requests, but now, I, I'm, we put in a request about, uh, my lawyer put in a request about last week sometime around the fourteenth, to, um, get some kind of resolution on this, is a yes or no answer for the taste of honey.
Have you gone before the State Liquor Authority?
Um, the State Liquor Authority, well, once again, your ruling has to come first before the State Liquor Authority.
It's not the interpretation that I received, I went in with the deputy mayor, and we met with the State Liquor Authority people, the entire chain, including the people by video contact, they're all running, and they need to make a ruling on your situation, and you are the owner of the village, you've got the bar, so-
That's right, my wife is the owner of the bar, and she's right here with me as well. But the one thing is this, we, we don't have any, if you deny us, that's fine, but at least pull the trigger, because everybody who, who's in this meeting right now, they were in this meeting six weeks ago, asking you the same thing. Like, this administration takes a long time to aim, and they tell us everything that they plan on doing, but they don't pull the trigger on anything.
We went to the State Liquor Authority for the first time, mayor always having a rapport with them, we wanna pick that up, they explained the procedure, the process, and they're the key in this equation. They're the ones who issued the State Liquor license, and that's gonna be determining factor with whether the taste of honey remain open or not, but we await their response.
Mayor Ryan, we already approved the license, we have a business, we have the liquor license to be there, we, we, we are approved from the State Liquor Authority, I can bring in my license to you any day, we have a liquor license.
If you could, bring it into the deputy-
The only thing that we don't have is the business license to the village of Hempstead.
Bring in the first piece that you were referencing to the deputy mayor.
To the deputy mayor, to Perry?
Yes.
When would you like it, Perry? Would you like it today?
Tomorrow morning?
Alright. Now, after this, would I have some kind of answer, would you guarantee me an answer after this?
Well, obviously, the State Liquor Authority is not being communicationless, they made, they made that clear, it was over there. We wanna have the same rapport before, we have to be on the same page, they're taking the lead in this fact, and they've got a couple of other situations that brought to our attention, and we're working together.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, because they, the reason that they're even involved in this is because they stated that the mayor, Don Ryan, sent them a letter stating that we were not in compliance.
I didn't write any letter to the State Liquor Authority, but I want to represent-
Well, then, then, then you have the accent, because the only reason this whole can of words is open is because they received a letter from the new mayor, Don Ryan, signed by Don Ryan, stating that we were, I'm just explaining to you, well, my lawyers explain to me, I have, listen, I have three lawyers working on this case right now, as we speak, I have three separate lawyers working on this case, and what they explained to me is that the only reason that the State Liquor Authority is having any kind of grievance is because the new mayor, Don Ryan, sent them a letter.
Well, we both was in Manhattan the whole day with the Liquor Authority, and I didn't see no letters.
Oh, well, I, 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 I'll, I'll, I'll-
Listen, let's, let's-
I'll read it back to you.
We'll cut the chase, tomorrow you meet with the deputy mayor, he's got the phone number of the State Liquor Authority out right next door, they're on the phone, they are on the same page, it's clear what we left there, so I, I don't wanna contradict what you're saying, but I do know what they said. What do your license require?
Uh, we, we just renewed it in twenty, in twenty seventeen, so we have two more years, it expires in twenty nineteen.
Correct.
We have, we have two more years, we just renewed the license, I just, I just obtained the license in November twenty sixteen, and then it expired in Jan, in February, we renewed it in February.
Is the situation, what your situation is all about?
I'm just, why don't they stop it when you guys are talking, when you're answering me, they're not, they're not stopping the clock when you're answering.
Well, we, we didn't stop you from speaking, so don't worry about that. My thing is, is it pending a hearing, your license right now?
My license- My license is pending a hearing because the village doesn't approve of my, you see the owner? I'm in the world, but I don't like.
They didn't tell us that when we was there, if it's on our business.
And absolutely, that's the only.
Yeah, but it's because of tomorrow, there is an issue in which we're urgently at, whether your license carries over to a new owner, or what the fact that this church next door impacts on whether you can get a license. State liquor authority is going back into the equation. We cannot trump, they're going, Edward, right? We're not going, we're not going to do anything until we get there, okay?
There is home church next door, we discussed this the last time. And then if I have the abilities, we have the ability, the liquor license is within our name.
We're going on the same thing, but let me just say to you, there is next door to you, a church owned Ucent, slowly.
Yeah, it's not a church though. A church, a church is different from a Ucent.
Oh, but this is a recommendation that their investigator is going to make. So we have to hold them tight. And we're not going to go forward, the state liquor authority, that's on the same page. Meet with the deputy mayor tomorrow.
Will we have an answer? Will we have an answer? If it isn't, no, I I take that notice.
We're gonna meet with him tomorrow. We don't wanna give an answer before we get all of the information. Come in, come in tomorrow at ten, I'm gonna talk to the liquor authority before you come in. And you can bring the license and go.
I'll bring him in. I, oh, thank you.
Please rise.
Good evening. Bill, what? Mr. May, we had talked about police presence at school board meetings.
Yes.
Prior to our new superintendent coming in, we never had police presence at our meeting.
May I interrupt you at this point?
No, no, for just five minutes, we'll get it out, I'll just say. I've been to any school board meeting before, and I can tell you, I'm present at these meetings too. And I wanted to say, we've always wanted to have police um working together with our schools. I I commend our wonderful um juvenile department, because they work very well with our middle school. I don't know how they work with the high school, I'm not at high school. But I am the um BTSA president at the middle school. And I commend our wonderful um juvenile department because some very, very good, good police officers who retired. They all retired at one time. How am I gonna let that happen? But anyway, what I wanted to also talk about is about code enforcement. I'm disappointed, I'm not gonna say disappointed, I will say, Penn and code enforcer, who is a volunteer firefighter, go to a code enforcement in his volunteer fire truck and do code enforcement. That's a question. Also, I'm going to um say Scott Rettner. I went to an event where he received an award. And he made some statements that sort of scared me. I would like to say, when dealing with him, is the possibility that you could have some of us from the community involved in those meetings in regards to what the community looks like, take some of us, uh feelers and homeowners, renters, et cetera, and have a community sit down and talk with him in regards to what we would like to see in the community. Um also, uh and I sit down and tell you why, I have a video of him, of what he said. We need a place to allow truckers to park their trucks, okay? People that live in this community have jobs. We'd rather not have an unemployed trucker. I'd rather trucker who lives here, maybe we could charge them a small fee and find like a parking lot where they could store their trucks when they come home one day. We need something like that. Yeah, I know they have big parking lots, municipal parking lots and things like that. But maybe we could use those spaces where they could leave their trucks, opposed to having a look for space and park it legally. If they live here, maybe they can pay a yearly fee and say, you know, um, and they can get a registration placard showing that they are registered with the village of Hempstead. And um that I think that's something you have to consider. They're taxpayers, and they're taxpayers, you'd rather them working and having a place to leave their wings. I'm concerned about transparency because things are being said tonight that um is concerning me as a taxpayer and as someone who's very active in this community. I think that we need to look at like what you said. That that community benefit agreement, my my mortgage did not, never didn't tell me and pay it to my best of my ability. It gave me time to find, it said, my rent mortgage was due on the first of the month. If I didn't pay it, I had penalties and fees. And I believe that that community, that that, is it CBA, is that what it is? Where they had Renaissance, that immigrant Renaissance. When I read it, I think that was lonely. For him to say, he knew he was getting away with something. And I I'm glad, I hope we stopped the bus on that. And we need something that's going to say, we're going to hire, we have to. He needs, we need something that's going to say, language, a real language. A real contract with our community. A real contract with the men and the women that are going to be hired. And and I really believe that we need to do what's right. And what's right is making sure our police department does a great job, which they did one Sunday night. I was very proud of them. What happened with Turks Avenue, they did a great job. No one was tamed, no one was pepper sprayed. And I think it did an excellent job. So I say, so our police department job well done. No one was injured. And they let it get out of this system. You know, these, you know, these kids are raised differently than us. We have, we were taught manners. And I hope that we can start a mentoring component with our police department, with our middle school. That's important. Having bonded police officers, judges, people who are already fingerprinted with the state, nurses, those people who can be mentors, every student in a high middle school needs a mentor. And don't forget, I think at the African American museum, I know they clashed with your event for June thirty. If you can just put your head in at the museum.
The World War One. The service.
On on probably show this, we have it something, that's the last day of the.
This is another museum performance, okay, appreciate it. All right, here we go. Let's talk the police spoken at school board meetings. Mr. Rettner, you were gonna comment, I have a comment as well, but I'll yield to you.
I I was, I was on the school board, I believe, for six years. I can't remember a meeting that we didn't have a police presence. I can't remember a meeting that we did not have a police presence.
Mr. May, I'm not, I'm talking about, since I've been here and I know probably they were there. But I'm talking about in the last few years, we have not had police officers at our meetings. I'm telling you, they have not been.
Have not, exactly.
I can only speak for the times of our.
Well, I'm talking about now, I'm talking about recently. It has, we have not had police. And even when the the new superintendent made a comment, and his comment was this. And he was short of saying, I use the word netball, because I'm not using that other word. He was short of saying, if you act up, we're gonna have you removed by the police. He said that. No one has ever, we have just had, we just had a superintendent who left. And he's made that comment. No other superintendent that has been there has ever disrespected the community the way he did. But I will say this, we just had a meeting with him tonight. And I'm gonna tell you, he's, he has a different tone now. But no other superintendent has done that since you, since you've been on the school board. We have, we have not had police presence at our school board meetings. And Mr. Mar, I'll tell you, we have not.
The security team at the school takes precedence.
Yes.
The police are not going to make the arrest of the old people. They'll only come in if they're called. Two police folks who were assigned there were in a car outside the building. They're not in the building. Is there a history of this? Clearly. And I believe he was superintendent for ten years, he always had two police officers at every meeting. Talking most recently, the police officer, okay. The police officers most recently have been outside the the building. And they're there if needed. Now, if I'm error, I'm gonna err on the side of caution protecting the residents of this community. And they're there only if they're needed, they have to be called upon before they would enter the building.
Well, the night that, I'm telling you, the night that Melissa Figueroa lied and claimed she was kicked and punched, there was no police there, because we haven't called the police. So I'm telling you, police are not at our meetings until, and this is just recently. We have never had police, we're not animals, we know how to govern ourselves. So I'm saying to you, it was an insult to us, the fact, the fact that a new superintendent would come in and feel that he has an error on the side of judgment. Now, we're not animals, we know how to govern ourselves. And if I, if I ever felt like injured and punched someone, it wouldn't have been that night. But I have the Holy Spirit right inside of me. And a lot of us are angry, but we're not angry to the point of violence. We're not. Hempstead is not, we're not crazy, we're not violent people.
It's the good people of Hempstead.
Thank you.
Appreciate the fact, though, that there is protection needed. If it's not needed, it's not there.
We paid the security mayor, we paid the.
I agree with that, and the security is in charge. Inside that building, they're in charge.
Anyway, it's okay. Mr. May, no disrespect, I know that you were, you were board president, and I respect that. But we've never had, the new, other administration didn't find it necessary, and we don't, because we're not animals. But I'm gonna go on to my next question, so transparency, um.
If you could, do you have this in the last question, please?
No, no, I haven't, no, I want you to, no, I want you to go back to my other question. We talked about zombie houses. I've been up here a couple of times, and I've never gotten any answers to any of my questions. And I'm out of respect, I come on my own time, nobody pays me to advocate for the people of this community. And sometimes I don't feel good, but um to my peril, I'm gonna take my payment.
I appreciate that, let's be specific, the question is.
Transparency. When I said to you about um code enforcement, you have a code enforcer.
Okay, now I got that one. Joe, are you here?
I'm here.
The question was, a code enforcer in a fire truck involved in the village business?
Yes.
The last um code enforcement guy that held the office of chief of the Hempstead fire department was Roger Ford in the year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
And can he use his truck?
So was it recent or was it three years ago?
Recent, does he, did he sell the truck?
No.
Okay, and and the last time, was it while he was on?
I guess he could use his village, he could use his village vehicles, they're both village vehicles. So I guess he could use them, sure.
He can, so he can see, so he can use his truck and say, well, what?
He's still gonna introduce himself and knock on the door and show his sense of Roger Ford, Inspector of the Village Department. I'm I'm not sure he goes, I'm the fire chief. If he responded to a call in his fire chief vehicle and he had some type of work with it. He'll have to introduce himself, show his ID. If there was a problem at that time, then someone should have called supervisor and I would have addressed it at that.
He is no longer chief, he's a member of the fire.
Yes.
Okay. Scott Rettner? Concerned Scott, can we, when you meet with him, are you just meeting with him? Or can we, as people, as concerned citizens for our community?
We're planning to have a village meeting in September, covering what the project may be there and other issues of importance for residents. So in total time, you'll have an opportunity.
Is it making a big deal about this community benefit agreement that is all, it's known all over? People starting to use it, you know, about the twenty-five percent? But the the language in it is so lax.
It's better than papers.
Yes, so are we gonna, are we gonna change the language in that and um let hold him to it? Or we're gonna let him continue to use that language?
It's in place. But in September, those types of issues will be addressed. And then we'll have a report from Scott. And there are other items of interest that we're gonna share with the public and get into.
Okay, and then um a place to allow truckers to um, and maybe maybe collect any of the fee for those people who own, um.
I don't have any choice, mind quickly, give us an opportunity to think about that one.
Well, I have a meeting with you on Friday, so we'll get to it on the table. I'll see you Friday, and Milan.
Are you bringing lunch?
Yes, I bring, it's breakfast time, but I'll bring you breakfast. And Mr. um trustee Johnson, we are behind you one hundred percent. We pray for you. Liars will be exposed, all right?
Thank you. Captain Garrett?
Excuse me, tonight, our middle school's not activated. Excuse me.
Yes.
I put, I submitted a form, you should have it.
Terry, what's that, Captain?
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um regarding these antim, um as you know, a lot of people rely on me for information. And I was wondering if you could give us a little bit more information on the uh situation. Uh is it RXR, is that the name of the company?
That's correct.
Then how do you spell, is Scott Ratner, R A T N E R? Is that correct?
I I believe Scott's last name is spelled R E C H L E R.
R E C H.
L E R.
L E R. Rettner.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, um has the master developer contract been assigned to him? Has the contract been signed in? The master developer again?
Do you find that's a thing you will need here?
Well, I think it's easy, you can just give us the answers. Has the contract been assigned to him? Well, is this Renaissance downtown urban America, is that out completely now?
No, it's definitely not out completely.
So what is the, what is the arrangement?
The arrangement is that fifty-fifty, Scott Rettner is now the co-master developer.
Oh, the co-master developer.
And in Scott's own words, Don Monty's on the side, quote unquote.
So that's Scott, but do they have a written agreement?
That's between them.
So don't they have to give you a copy of their agreement?
At the moment, we get to, at this point, we're asking that Scott, as a new player, introduce this plan to us and we'll phone legal advisors.
And um in terms of the ownership of the parking lots, how does this affect the ownership of the parking lots? Because they're right now in the name of R D U A parcel one, parcel two, parcel three.
The fourteen parking lots are still under Don Monty's name.
So the parking lots.
And these are all the patients.
Okay, um and how does this affect the appraisals? Because you're talking about a new plan, and the 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 properties were transferred on the basis of appraisals of of particular apartment buildings on the parking lots. And I handed out uh information, uh the exhibit key, I think it was, that lists the uh plans that Don Monty put in for the appraisal. And that's what produced the appraisal that uh.
The essential value. We we're asking the same information from Scott. And he needs some time, we just got two weeks ago, we're gonna give him a little more time, see if we can get together, get these answers.
I mean, but what about the legal issue of the appraisals were uh appraised on the plans that Don Monty submitted for these apartment buildings?
It's on the table with Scott.
In terms of the appraisal, the the plans that were uh appraised had never been presented to the village board. And um do you think that any new plans for these apartments will first be presented to the village board uh before there's any type of action taken? In other words, in the past, everything was just done quietly behind the scenes. There was no involvement of the village board. And um I'm just wondering if you intend now to have um authority over what's gonna be planned to build? In other words, vote of the village board as opposed to just uh the owner saying, okay, we're gonna build this.
They can build, they can build within code whatever they want. The issue is, they need investors. To get the investors, they need pilots. To get the pilot, they need their blessing to us, it's a down Hampstead I D A, or the village of Hampstead. Nazo County I D A has still no interest in. So there's still the involvement of how they get the investors. And seemingly, the key word here is pilot, payment, move taxes.
Movement taxes. So in other words, we're still gonna be based on that same, that same mission. Um and you said light, that they were gonna emphasize light industry and what else?
No, 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 that's not true. I said we would like light industry, commercial, family entertainment. I told them to be creative, come up with a plan, don't just come back here and tell us you want property built to pilots. Is there something else?
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you, I thought you said that, you was interested in light. I thought you said that you were interested in light industry and commercial.
No, I was just requesting, we had a meeting of him, and he'll come back and let us know technically what that stands in his way of thinking.
Okay. Thank you for the information, and I just wanted to make one other comment
Sure.
about the public hearings. I know that you've mentioned the difficulty of understanding the notice that is concerned of the public hearings. And as you know, I've been coming to these board meetings for many, many years, and the same process happens for all these years. And that you just, you know, quote the chapter that's being changed in the resolution, and people come to the meetings to find out what's happening in the community, and there's a public hearing, but the resolution doesn't tell us what the public hearing is about. And I would ask that you reconsider how you do this. There should be some short explanation as to what the change is that you are having a public hearing on. I think we're helping create a little public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Winston?
Terry Winston, from 55, you're in Village Hempstead. I have a question, and your answer is going to depend upon my announcement, followed by another question. Because of that breach of communication regarding the last zoning board meeting, you had stated that at the last village meeting, that you would allow those attendants to upcoming meeting of the zoning board to speak, because you provided that at the last zoning board meeting. I wanted to know if you are going to, if that's going to take place?
Yes.
All right. So this is for the people at this meeting, the residents. I would like to encourage that you attend the zoning board meeting. It's dated for July the 6th, 2017, at 6:00 PM sometime, right?
It is 6:00 PM, indeed. It wasn't due till last time, be corrected. So we're doing it over again, fairness to the residents. I would mention though, that many of the residents, after we did it, said, make it seven. We can't make it seven for this meeting, it'd be too confusing once again, it's six. At that meeting, if you want to express it, Mr. Monteverde and the others, that you prefer seven because it's easier to get there, do so. And then that board will make the decision, they were independent at this point.
Okay, can I finish my comment regarding?
I owe you.
The meeting that's coming up? It's important that you attend this meeting if you're a resident, because it's going to discuss Kitty Jackson Street, also known as Amber Gardens. And the owner has been in violation of conditions of the variances, the numerous variants that the village had allowed him to get. I also have an issue with the homeless at the train station. Okay, it was to my understanding that during the week, they can't stay at the shelter, so they come in at the bus terminal, also the train station. Well, I happened to go by there on a Sunday evening, and they were hanging out again. So what's the excuse on a Sunday? I mean, don't they have another place to go besides the train station? I mean, where are the police? It's an ice source, disgusting. You know, I mean, I, if I had to go there for any reason other than to drop somebody off, I would really be concerned if I was just trying to go to work to get on the train to see that. It's on site, and it doesn't happen any other place but Hempstead. Also, regarding the lawsuit against the town of Hempstead IDA, did you file an appeal as yet?
No.
What? What do you weigh on?
Legal advice.
Legal advice? The homeless?
As a homeless situation, the train station, the bus station is concerned. We have met with the leadership of the bus station. Train station does have policing, but you never see them. The bus station has two men that are assigned. They walk around unarmed, and frankly, they don't get the job done. They go up to an individual and say, you have to keep moving. The individual says, I'm waiting for a bus. They have an answer, they move on. They come back and still later, I missed the bus, I can live with it. And this goes on too often. They've locked the bathrooms to avoid some of the drug problems. They'll lower it when there's a need, but the fact of the matter is, one of the problems we have in the village of Hempstead is we have a lot of strudges, a lot of group homes. I can't get a grip on it. I have asked for the list of all of them, and even of the mayor of the village of Hempstead. I seem to can't get it.
Well, you think you're right to get it?
I would think so, and we're trying. Remember now, the states can move somebody in here, we can't move them out of it. There's also some places that are here that are soda homes, they're not even legal. And we have a difficulty in identifying and then being able to enforce some of this. So it's an issue. It's unbelievable. I don't know how many of these homes we have. I'm in the process of trying to find out if we've had a discussion today. And we have the names of the people, we have the contact, and we have done so. We're asking for cooperation so we can get through and get this list complete. There's so many different types of group homes. It is true with some of them, you have to leave the home in the morning, presumably seek employment, and come back tonight. And in some instances, this doesn't do anything but create a discrediting homeless. And train station, the bus stop seems to be a couple of places that are paid.
And Mr. Mayor, our Sunday, they give our food at 2:00 AM.
They do, with the railway station, they do indeed, and then those people hopefully will move on to their home.
Well, yeah, she's right. And they have been giving our food.
They have, they have given, but they have the right to do so. We import it, there are people who need to get food. It's a charity that is to be promoted, it's not the homeless.
Yeah, but that's one of the problems, is that they want to eat and then they want to stay.